Finance committee meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Mr. McGlosia.
Here.
Mr. Tuyay.
Here.
Ms. Roy.
Here.
Okay, we need to elect the chairperson, please.
Nominate Mr. Tuyay.
There you go.
I accept.
All right.
Do we have to vote on that, Kim?
Uh-uh.
All right. All right, our committee meetings are broadcast live to access the stream. There is a video icon located in the out online meeting agenda and a link is located on our district website, Facebook and X formerly Twitter. Our next agenda item is to discuss and approve the Iberio Parish School Board monthly financial statements, including the income statement and revenue and expense summary by fund through December twenty twenty four. The report includes a comparison of budget to actual for each fund, including a percent to goal per budgeted account within the funds. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Roy, second by Mr. McGlosia. Mr. Stewart, do you have any comments?
Yes, as it relates to the budgets, the financial statements, we received another sixty million dollars in revenue this month. That doesn't show within the documents. We also will be bringing forth budget revisions between February and March at the latest March. Thank you.
All right, any other comments by the audience? Comments by the board?
So we're doing, we're okay. Everything running smooth. Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passion unanimously. The next item up is discussing approved the twenty twenty four to twenty five differentiated compensation plan. Can I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Roy, second by Mr. McGlosia. Dr. B.
Yes, for the second consecutive year, the Louisiana Legislature allocated summer funds for differentiated instruction or differentiated compensation. They did the stipends for everybody and then this is a pot of money that's restricted with where you can use it for teachers. There are four categories that are eligible for the use of these funds. One of the categories is for critical shortage areas as defined by DESI, which are secondary math, secondary science, and K through twelfth grade special education. We are again this year recommending that we allocate those funds for those specific teachers as well. The other categories are categories that we already provide additional compensation for in the regular master salary schedule. For instance, teacher leaders. We've got a couple of different groups that get additional pay in those roles. Master teachers are on ten month contracts, which gives them additional pay and they're on a different pay scale. Our mentor teachers get a stipend at the campus. Our lead teachers get a stipend. So those are the kind of positions that would have been eligible for that. Another provision is to allocate funds in a category for highly or high performing teachers, which are your highly effective teachers. Our master salary schedule also includes provisions to increase compensation for those teachers. Besides a performance stipend that they receive, they also can move up either two or three levels in the salary schedule. And then the fourth provision that it could be spent on for schools who have an eighty five percent or more free and reduced lunch rate, which as we looked at that last year and again this year, not all of our schools would qualify for that. And then our academies kind of, you know, throw those off because it's based upon the enrollment of the homeschool with the total numbers. So we don't have very many schools that actually fall into that category. So again, we're asking for these. These continue to also be where we have a lot of vacancies. Now, we've got a large number of uncertified teachers in a variety of areas throughout the district, including elementary, but we're typically able to fill those. This one is designed to help retain and recruit teachers in these critical shortage areas. So we're recommending your approval for this plan. It is less than last year by about a hundred thousand dollars total. This year's total is about a hundred forty eight with the retirement benefits.
All right, and I have a question, Dr. B. What about early interventionists?
They do not qualify.
Because they do special education for kindergarten, right?
Early interventionists are in early childhood. If any of them service just this last year kindergarten kids, then they could potentially get a prorated piece. But the State Department also looks at your PEPCODING and they're hired to be early intervention teachers for birth to five years old and we use them in our early childhood programming.
Okay, I think we have what, three or four that also service kindergarten? So if that being the case, then they can get a prorated?
That is correct and we reviewed those last year as well when that question came up later on. Once it was common stuff, yeah, putting out money. If they are, then they can get a prorated amount.
Okay.
I think some of the folks that called about it last year, that wasn't a consistent thing. You know, they may have went help out in the kindergarten class, but they wanted to sign that at all times.
So is that something you and Ms. Moore would get together on?
The HR department and I, you know, go through the scheduling pieces and we get what's spent to take a look at those.
All right. Do I have any other comments from the audience? Comments from the board? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Passion unanimously. All right, next item up is an update in relation to the audit finding within the AUP report.
All right, so wait till we get there. So each board meeting, we've been updated by our auditing team that we're actually supposed to give you an update as it relates to. as it relates to our journey to, to get a little bit better with the audit findings. That being said, which we've been working on diligently, we, we establish checkpoints within the trial approval process to ensure that the mileage is justifiable as well as that the receipts are legible and that we keep documentation on everything within content, which is our online filing system. Additionally, finance is focused on ensuring that journal entries are entered in a timely manner. We are with all but one account up to December at the current moment. That is leaps and bounds ahead of what we were in the past. And we, you know, we're ensuring that we track it and that we communicate with one another to have the documentation that we need. That's my update.
All right, thank you. Any comments? Dr. V.
Yes, I'd just like to make one additional comment. When the audit was given last year, we were asked to provide updates periodically to the board. This year, they've indicated that we need to do it every month. So this will be a standing-type item for the Finance Committee every month.
All right, thank you. Ms. Laws?
That was, I was kind of going to ask a question in relates to that, that it being a monthly item on the agenda rather than a occasional item. And then once we have reviewed all the audit findings, then we could not have it on the monthly review or we will have to report something going forward.
As long as there are findings in the audit, then that will have to be monthly. And we're going to go through the audit. Our external auditors will be here for the board meeting tonight to make that presentation to you. I can, you know, tell you from my experience working in government, there are always procedural findings on audits, you know? As the look-for has changed each year, as the procedures change each year, you know? Remember, we get this audit like you'll be presented tonight in January. We just saw the draft of it in December. Half the fiscal year is already gone and that audit is from the prior fiscal year. So I'm good as long as they're procedural and things that we can work on just from a process standpoint, I think that's great. And you see tonight that that is, you know, the types of findings is they're all procedural.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board, from the audience? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. McGlosia.
Second.
Second by Ms. Roy. Ms. Roy adjourn.
How do I reset it? Building and Grounds Committee Meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Holmes?
Here.
Ms. George?
Here.
Ms. Higdon?
Here.
We have a quorum. We need to elect a chairperson, please.
I nominate Ms. Polly. I nominate Ms. Polly.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. Okay, all righty. I'm having computer issues again. So our committee meetings are broadcasting live to access the stream. There is a video icon located in the online meeting agenda and a link is located on our district website, Facebook and X formerly Twittered. Okay? Yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you so much. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see where we are here when we get to this. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. The second agenda item is our monthly work order status report. May I have a motion, please? Motion by Ms. George, second by Mrs. Holmes. Thank you. Okay, Evan?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. If you see, the format is different. I changed up the format a little bit. Only the reason is it's a lot easier to read this way. It was starting to get a little too, too bulky of information that was irrelevant. So I separated it and as you see now, it's a lot easier to read. Work order statuses for the month of December. Submitted work orders, you'll see a hundred and thirteen. We closed out ninety-seven and as of right now, we've got around thirty-six work orders. Couple came in today, but at the time of the report, we had thirty-six. Monthly outstanding lists per craft, and this is just for the month. Last time I had it as a total and it was getting into the hundreds, which was irrelevant, right? So the outstanding list of now what's left and you can see that I broke everything down of the major topics that we're having. And that is it. Any questions?
Any questions from the audience? The board? Oh. Mr. Tuyay?
Next week, Evan, we have some very, very cold weather coming. Are we going to evaluate boilers before that?
Yes, we're on that, we're doing that right now. Everything right now is working as best as it can, but we will have the boilers running on Monday. Me and Josh are going to make sure that we're going to come out around noon to make sure everything's not tripped. We're having issues with them staying running. So before Tuesday morning hits, we will be out, just Josh and I, will be out on Monday to make sure they are back up and running and we can reset everything. All major issues are being addressed right now. The last one was MSA West and that is a temporary fix right now. There's a lot of issues that, very confusing, but we got it running. Cresson is running and it's been running very good since we finally found the issue with it and we got it running very good and there's no temporary fix to hit. There will be a project coming out hopefully in the near future to start replacing. I'm looking at four right now.
All right.
Replace.
Let's say the weather's really cold on Monday morning. What's the possibility of getting those boilers started maybe Sunday evening or something like that to?
Yeah, I mean, nobody's going to be here Monday because it's a holiday on the twentieth, so.
Okay, that's right.
So that's why we were coming out Monday after lunch.
I forgot about that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, Dr. V.
We'll be keeping a very close eye on the, on the weather next week. In case you haven't seen the forecast, as of right now, the forecast Monday here in Plaquemine is for snow. So we will be keeping a close eye. Last Monday, the forecast for Friday of last week looked a lot different than it ended up being. So we will be monitoring that closely. I do want to commend, you know, Evan, the whole maintenance staff, Ms. Miller. We have been back and forth like you wouldn't believe in communication to try to ensure that our systems are functioning properly. And our maintenance department under Evan's leadership and under Ms. Miller's leadership, the response is always really quick, you know? I think you all know, you received a lot of communication from me last week, mostly about boilers. And I was asked, and I put that in an email I sent you all this morning about how does that work with HVAC, you know, and air conditioning when we did a lot of these replacements? These pieces of equipment, as I mentioned in that correspondence, are different. And we are, they had already just finished an annual check of all of these systems the prior week and they all worked fine. And then last week, we ended up with some multiple failures basically of equipment. So Evan knows which ones are of highest need and they are in the process of looking at a replacement project that probably would mean coming back to the board to put out for beer.
I've got one more thing, Dr. V, and I don't know if this goes to Dr. V or Evan. The parts of these boilers that seem to be the issue, what's the chances of getting extra spares for the meantime just to having a warehouse to say, hey, this is broke, let me go change it. I mean, you work in plant, you know how it goes.
Theoretically, it sounds great. Practically, it's not. One thing, these parts are very expensive. They're very specific to each boiler. If you don't have the same boiler at every site, you're going to have a bunch of different parts to a bunch of different units that only specialty contractors can do because they're specially trained on this piece of equipment. That would be, I couldn't take a Ford part and put it in a Mercedes, right? And then you can, you need a person who works on Mercedes to work on Mercedes, not a Ford. So it's kind of like that if you think of it in that, that kind of mindset. Keeping the pieces of equipment and the parts on our shelf somewheres, things disappear, things get lost and these are very expensive parts. And the last thing we need is one of them things going somewheres that where it's not supposed to be. And now we're looking for it. The best thing to do is do your annuals like we're doing, try to catch it as best we can. But when everything's running well and we have a contract, contractor come out, fix everything good and then the next week it blows out an orifice, orifice plate, nothing you can do about that. Now what we did was we welded it, the orifice plate back in, so now it won't blow out. We got the approval from the manufacturer. So this kind of stuff is really not practical. Theoretically, it sounds great, but it just, well, it wouldn't work.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Laws?
And Evan, usually the turnaround time for those parts are?
Ooh, depends on what part you get. A lot of these parts come from up north, so, and that's what happened with MSA West. This part was from New York City. We had it overnighted, so it's three times the amount, which the contractor said he's going to take care of for us because it was an issue. So they did do that for us. It got stuck in Kentucky on the way here. And so all that weather that was supposed to come here stopped it because the roads, it couldn't get here. It finally got here the next day. We installed it, got it working and everything was good. You're looking at anywhere from seven to fourteen days for each, for these parts. Now, some minor, but they all come from specialty shipment warehouses up north, up north country. Anywhere from New York City to Michigan, all that way. It's just, and this is the heater, so it's going to be snowing and it's going to be roads going to be blocked and stuff. So it's just very hard to get that stuff here.
Right, so Evan, thank you kindly, your team and yourself for, you know, the diligent work that you all did, you know, last week to get things up and running.
Yes, ma'am.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just, I'm glad you brought up the, about the material. I try to tell everybody, I can't go to Blantyre's Ace Hardware and get these off the shelf. They take, take a long time because they're specialty metals. The one we got was a specialty kind of specialty stainless steel, pretty much what it was. Normally, it's a brass and you screw it in. This is a specialty stainless steel so we can back weld it. But that just is, and it's a very expensive item. Luckily, they did have one and got it to us as quick as possible, but normally it's, it's a challenge.
Right, and we appreciate you responding. I know board members as well as.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Just trying to get it up, so we do appreciate you responding to all of us.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. Our next agenda item, long-term project planning list. Evan?
All right, so if we look on the attachment. All right, so we can break everything down. I'm going to go through it real quick. Lemonade's a lot of stuff that was, when we, it was a hundred percented the last month. So this month, you're going to see some stuff that, that was a hundred percented, you know, in the month of December. So like cafeteria HVAC system, everything's a hundred percent. The light's being installed right now. It's looking very good. We're starting to see the end of the light, so we're going to be finishing up within this month. They started installing the equipment this week, I'm sorry, last week. So the last thing we're waiting on is the windows. We have made a change order to replace the windows. It was a single-pane windows. We went to a double-pane window that's a lot more energy efficient. It wasn't part of the project, so we ordered them. We're just waiting for them, on them to come in and then we're going to install them. And they're going to start their punch item list probably at the end of this month and we're going to be cranked up, ready to rock and roll probably at the beginning of next month. Dorseyville Cafeteria, if you look at its cafeteria, cafitorium, everything's looking on track as far as where we're at. And what I mean is not on track of the original schedule. Everybody knows that the schedule has changed because of the tank form that we had to build. Right now, the tank is being fabricated. They already ordered material. Everything's being built, but as they're building things, they can finally go ahead and hang their overhead piping, which lets them then do the ceiling, do the floors and start making this thing look a lot better than it does. And so start looking to where we can start installing equipment and that's the next step.
So is there any idea with when the completion date?
I can't give you an accurate one right now because I don't know how long it's going to take them to build this, this tank and then the install of the tank. So, no, ma'am, I cannot give you an accurate, because I don't have a schedule on it yet. It's still new as far as the fabrication. Now, once the fabrication gets done, I'll get a schedule and they'll be able to tell me whenever it's going to be installed.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll try to get that for you next month. All right, East Iberia Field House? Just a question mark, right? I mean, we are, everybody knows the issues that we're dealing with. We got to remove the roof and we're going to put the roof back on. It was not up to our standards. It was not up to building codes and it was not up to spec. So we have told them that you got to come off. We're not accepting it and that's the process we're at right now. Completion date? I don't know. I can't, I can't even give you an answer on that one. Yes, ma'am.
Um, when I passed by there one day last week or the week before, I saw a crane, so I thought they was taking the roof off.
Yes, ma'am.
But they was putting the air conditioning units on the top.
Yes, ma'am. They were putting air conditioning on this, on the, these short roof.
Yeah.
We're talking about is the tall roof.
Oh.
So it's like the main roof. So guess what that does? That stops all the flooring being done, that starts all the painting being done in that room. That, that's your main room. So that stops all the equipment going in.
So the gentleman haven't told you when he's going to take that roof off?
So we've requested that and I have not heard anything yet. I haven't talked to David, I mean, Mr. Brad, yet. But I haven't got nothing in writing that says, hey, we're taking it off on this date and I don't see it on their schedule no more.
Okay.
There you go. Maybe he would.
I can't give you any additional information. We rejected the work because it did not meet the specifications of the job. It's on them to give us updated schedule. The delay is on them and they will be subject to damages because of this delay. But they're going to have to take it off and as Evan said, they will not be able to complete the inside of the building. So other work is going to continue to be performed, but the roofing work that's there, they can't salvage any of it. So it's the roofing and the deck that's below. So they've ordered it and it's probably going to be, if I had to guess, four to six weeks' delivery before they can start tearing off and putting on, so.
So when you, Evan, when you go back and have a meeting with them, can you call us and we can meet you? When you go back and do a walkthrough with them?
Yes, ma'am. Sure, I'll let you know.
Okay. I'd like to be in that conversation.
Yes, ma'am. I'll send an email out with a meeting date to Dr. V and he can share it with y'all. That way, everybody's on the same page.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, let's move forward. We, we got Iberia Elementary School. The heat exchanger has been replaced. Everything's working on that side of it and all the water's back to normal. It's, it's a lot cleaner than it was, so we're going to have less issues now. So this exchanger should last us a lot longer than the last one and everything's running well on that side. We still got some issues, minor issues, but it's nothing as big as far as any kind of big equipment that needs to be replaced. Now, the boiler on our hand is one of them that's on the list, but it's, it's very, very, not much going on with it as far as maintenance-wise. It's a very good boiler. It is old, but it's, it's outlasting a lot of the newer ones. All right, MSA East Academy, removal of the garden structure. I had this on last time. I'm still waiting on a start time for the contractor. It's touet, it's been touet and it's hard for him. It's too wet, it's been too wet, and it's hard for him to get it because it's, it's not an easy removal. I think it's going to have to require the kids not being on site because they're going to have to go in, in with a fence and actually remove this stuff. So we're just waiting on a good start time for them to do it. MSA West Academy, the gym or floor repair, we just got them a PO. They should give us a date. I'm waiting for a good start date for them. I'm waiting for the material to be ordered, and they can get it going. And as soon as they give me a start date, I'll have that, should have that for you next month, and I'll, I'll fill y'all in on the schedule and see when that's going to be finished.
So Evan, excuse me.
Yes.
That's going to be a repair?
Yes. So we, I got with the original contractor on that. And they supply that size of material. They're one of the only suppliers of the two-and-a-half-inch material for this floor. So he says they have plenty. I said, great, can you do the floor for us? Yes, absolutely. So we went through the whole process with them, and they submitted us their quote, and it was $100,000 less than to replace the whole floor. So we got somebody that can repair this floor if ever needed. Yes, ma'am. And he explained to me at the time what happened, and it made sense, so.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. All right, and then the pre-ka addition, y'all can see it. The mobilized equipment was done, all the material was done. They started demoing, worked for the new addition. The foot, the footing was poured, and rerouting main water line. What we had to do, the main water line from the school was underneath where the new building is going to be, so we had to cut it off, disconnect it, and reroute it. And that, and we poured that old concrete that's done, and the footer's all poured right now, and we're going to start going up here pretty shortly.
Got a question, Evan?
Yes.
While we're on MSA West, do we have any plans? So when we got on the board in '23, I think it was the person that was in this role before you.
Okay.
That was on the list of our greenhouse at MSA West.
Yeah, so I'm a.
Are we still planning on that, or?
Yes, sir. So I reached out to a company that, actually, one of our contractors got me in touch with, and I got prices for two greenhouses, one for MSA West and one for North Iberville, I believe. We're just waiting for a good time to do it. It's hard to do anything right now with North Iberville, so that goes back to the procurement side. Okay, what I'm saying is, I can't build, and, and Dr. V. can talk to, I can't say, I'm going to put a project out for the same greenhouse at this school, and I'm going to wait, and I'm going to do it at this school. And then that's going to mess me up on my procurement side, and so I have to wait. So right now, where that greenhouse is going to go for North Iberville is being in a construction zone right now, so I can't put it out. I can get all the information ready. I can get everything ready, and then whenever it's time for us to start building both of them, we can talk about doing that.
So you want to do both of them at the same time, is what you're saying?
Procurement-wise, and I'll let Dr. V. talk to him more about that. After he talked to Evan Alvarez, he explained it to us. It's a fine, fine, fine line on how we have to do it, and Dr. V., if you want to fill him in on that?
Yes, I'm waiting on further details from Evan from a legal standpoint. It actually was the greenhouse that started this conversation. We, we did upgrades of some of the electrical, soundboarding and lightings and so forth at both packs, at MSA East and MSA West. And the lighting was going to be the next step for the MSA East pack. So Evan and I started conversations around the public bid law when it comes to public works, because the public works, if it goes out over $250,000, you've got to put it out for bid. And the additional work at MSA East would take the total out over. And typically, those projects, because they're on two different sites, would be separate public works projects. And that's the way that we've always operated, which is the way that it's always been interpreted. Through some conversation that he had with someone at the Legislative Auditor's Office, they may believe that you have similar projects, then you have to combine them to one public works project. So if that is the case, which we'll get a little more follow, we're ready to move on the, the MSA West one. If that is the case, then we will have to put the North Iberville one off until next fiscal year. And then if we happen to end up with another one, then we got to go through a bid process. But when you combine them both, that's when you run into this whole bid law issue. And again, these kind of projects were always seen as separate things on separate, different, you know, plants, you know? So I'm waiting on a little more clarification because we've had to hold off on the, the last phase of MSA East pack for lighting, and we also have had to hold off on this as a result.
What about combining East and West greenhouses, and then waiting to the building that's done at North, and then doing that one separately? Is that a?
I understood that we were supposed to get a greenhouse.
Yeah. Greenhouse is going to end up in all parts of the parish. I don't know if East is ready for it yet. They've just kicked off their ag program this year. We do know MSA West is absolutely ready to go with it, and North programmatically is ready, but the space is the problem right now with the construction that we've got going on in a few different areas on that campus.
All right. I, I went by there, and I saw the garden at West, and it was pretty.
Yeah, and, and I saw it, that one, I've seen the one at, there's actually two of them at North Iberville, at the elementary and the high school. So it's growing in, in, no pun intended, but in multiple parts of the parish. And again, we kicked off the, the ag program at East this year that's combined with MSA East, and looking forward to some great things there as well.
All right, thank you.
All right, so North Iberville Cafeteria renovations, if you haven't seen them, they look, they look great. Everything's being, is functionally, everything's working well. We do have some training to do on the school food service side, but we're working through that and getting everything lined out and make sure everybody knows how to work the new equipment. I'm pretty sure that they already know how to use equipment. It's just a protocol that we have to go through. The Building G classroom, if y'all ain't seen it, I mean, it's going up, and it's going up quick, too. So it looks very good. They have started, I don't know if you've seen the backside of it, but the new, the new elevator to the old school is going up as well. So it's going to be, it's fun to watch them, watch them guys work. All right, Plaquemine High. So if y'all saw on the website and on Facebook, we submitted this out for advertisement. We had our walk down, and what this is, is the fascia of the building that looks, you know, funky. We're going to soft wash it, and they're going to repaint it for us. At the same time, we have the JROTC room, which needs to be painted as well. And this is a request coming from the hierarchy in the ROTC program, and she explained the reasons, and it, and it made sense at the time. So we, we put them out, we had our walk, and now on the 17th, which is this Friday, we're going to select the bids, and we're going to start them as soon as they can. I told them they're going to have to wait when the kids are not there to do the inside. With the outside, they can part in pieces as much as they want, and we can get it done as fast as possible. Our White Castle Gym, we have perimeter fences installed. We're doing punch items just right now. We've walked in with the principal multiple times. She's given us a list. And David from Fusion has given us a list, and we just keep progressing and walking through that. Press boxes at East Iberville and White Castle, they're almost done. I mean, we got a couple more items on there that we still need to get, and we're waiting for some keys to come in, but all in all, the press boxes do look great, and we are pretty much almost finished. And then the concession stands, you will see, we still got a little bit of time left to do them, but they will be finishing up either this, should be at the end of this month, everything we should be finished up. So next month, I'll come to y'all as punch items for this as well. And that should be all of them. Any questions?
Any questions or comments from board members?
I just have one question. Has the contractor been out for the football field yet at North?
Yes, they, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's Stewart and Company, so the same company that's building the Building G, the new Bill, or I call it Building G.
I didn't realize that.
That's the same company that's doing that one. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we, we do have, I, I am going to put a project out to do the bathrooms and the concession stands. It's not going to be a full renovation because then it gets into a different kind of law, a kind of rev two is what we're going to stay in. We're going to do some touch-up paints, replace some toilets, and, and we're, I think the petitions need to be touched up, too, so we're going to just look at all of that and kind of clean it up a little bit. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Holmes, second by Mrs. George. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Good evening and welcome to Iber-Ville Parish School Board Meeting. I call to order the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five regular school board meeting. Our meetings are broadcasting live to access the stream. There is a video icon located in the online meeting agenda, and a link is located on our district website, Facebook, and formerly Twitter X, which is formerly Twitter. Also, the meeting can be viewed on Cox Channel twenty-one every Saturday at seven P. M. following the scheduled school board meeting. The school board agenda can be found on our district website every Wednesday afternoon prior to the monthly board meeting. The school board agenda can be found on our... The public participation policy is posted on our district website and at the front entrance next to the elevator. Thank you for following our policy. Roll call, please, Ms. Raj.
Ms. George?
Here.
Mr. Abair?
Here.
Ms. Higdon?
Here.
Ms. Holmes?
Here.
Ms. Laws?
Here.
Mr. McGlasha? Ms. Roy?
Here.
Mr. Tuyay?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We will have reflections by Ms. Teresa Roy following a moment of silence. Please stand and remain standing until after the pledge of allegiance.
Father in heaven, help our schools to be a place of unity and peace. T-shirts to accept one another and to learn from our divisions, experiences, and backgrounds. Help us to work together in harmony and respect for the betterness of our community. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance will be presented by Christian Elementary students. Shawn Joseph, second grade. Addison Owens, third grade. Blake LeBuff, third grade. Claire Gajon, fourth grade. Seth John Jones, fifth grade, and Aria Tillman, fifth grade. Students?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, Ms. Roy, for the reflections and again thank our Christian elementary students for being here tonight. And now we will have the Iber-Ville Parish School Board Vision Statement by Ms. Polly Higdon.
With our families as partners, the Iber-Ville Parish School System will provide equitable opportunities, academic excellence, and positive school environment so that every student thrives in the path that they choose.
Thank you, Ms. Higdon. Now we will have recognitions and presentations. If there are any elected officials in the audience, please stand. The first item on the agenda for recognitions and presentations is recognition of Iber-Ville Parish School Board's January Senior Spotlight. Ashari Jones, a student at Iber-Ville Virtual Learning Academy. Ashari?
Ms. Ashari Jones, a senior at Iber-Ville Virtual Learning Academy, is from White Castle and maintains a three-point-five GPA. Ashari has earned a certification in Adobe Photoshop. She also attends River Parish Community College, where she is pursuing a P-Tech degree with the goal of becoming an operator following the footsteps of her aunt, who has been a major inspiration in her career choice. Ashari chose to attend IVLA for the flexibility it provides, allowing her to manage her time better and work at her own pace. Virtual learning has helped Ashari to stay organized and focused while balancing both high school and college courses. In her free time, she enjoys hanging out with friends, playing video games, and playfully teasing her dad and aunt. Congratulations, Ms. Ashari Jones.
And Ms. Lu, please pass that on to Ashari and perhaps she is participating virtually tonight.
Congratulations, Ashari. The second item on the agenda is to discuss and approve recognizing January as being Louisiana School Board Member Recognition Month and adopting LSBA Code of Conduct for school board members. Do I have a motion? Have a motion by Ms. Teresa Roy and a second by Ms. Polly Higdon. I will read the proclamation as it state, whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. And whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas the local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system. And whereas local school board members are strong advocates of public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, the Iber-Ville Parish School Board does hereby proclaim July twenty-twenty-five as... I'm sorry, January twenty-twenty-five as School Board Recognition Month. We encourage all stakeholders and the community to join us in recognizing the dedication and the hard work of Iber-Ville Parish School Board members and in working with them to mold an educational system that meets the needs of both today and tomorrow children. An official recognition whereof at our regular school board meeting on the thirteenth day of January twenty-twenty-five. I would like to thank and extend my thanks to my colleagues for their dedication and hard work as we describe as a board to continue to contribute to the success of the Iber-Ville Parish School District.
And in conjunction, LSBA asks that all boards in the state of Louisiana and recognize in Recognition Month also adopt the LSBA Code of Conduct for Louisiana School Board members. I shared this with the board for the public. It is in board docs if you want to go view it. It's a lot of verbiage, so I'm not going to read all of that tonight. But applaud you for adopting that code of conducts as well, of conduct as well. You know, the board is charged to approve student codes of conduct and, you know, we administratively employ conduct. And of course, you as a board govern yourselves and we appreciate you doing that as well. I'll have a few further comments when I have my report in a few minutes.
And I'll just make one more comment in regards to the LSBA Code of Conduct. I think the timing is impeccable. You know, over the next two years, ninety percent of school boards all in the state of Louisiana will either be partially new or in its entirety, new school boards. So just adopting, you know, these code of conducts is good for the state of Louisiana as a whole. So we thank the district for adopting these code of conducts and I appreciate that. Thank you kindly. At this time, we have any comments from the board or any comments from the audience? If not, Ms. Raj, machine please.
Online voting is now open.
Yes.
And do we have the video that our students made for the board ready? This little gift tonight from Plackman High that sent this for our school board members.
In this video, my students would like to express a heartfelt gratitude to each of you for all of your dedication, leadership, and support and making our schools a better place for learning. Thank you all for everything that you do.
Mr. Michael Abair Jr., thank you for your unwavering dedication to our school community. Your support for the innovative programs has truly made a difference in our education. We appreciate everything you do.
Ms. Yolanda Laws, your leadership and commitment to our school district inspires us every day. Thank you for advocating for our needs and ensuring we have the best resources to thrive. We are grateful for your hard work.
To Ms. Polly Higdon, we want to express our heartfelt thanks for your passion for education and your tireless efforts to improve our schools. Your vision has helped shape our futures and we appreciate your guidance.
Ms. Pam George, your dedication to fostering a positive learning environment does not go unnoticed. Thank you for listening to our voices and making decisions that benefit all students. We're lucky to have you onboard.
To Mr. Mario McGlasha, your commitment to equity and inclusion within our school is truly admirable. Thank you for ensuring that every student has a chance to succeed and for making our school a better place for all.
Ms. Teresa Roy, thank you for your hard work and dedication to our district. Your efforts to enhance our curriculum and extracurricular activities make a significant impact on our learning experiences. We appreciate you.
Ms. Catherine Williams, your support for our teachers and staff is vital to our success. Thank you for recognizing the importance of quality education and for advocating for resources that helps us through it. You are appreciated.
Mr. Davin Tuyay, we are grateful for your innovative ideas and forward-thinking approach. Your enthusiasm for education motivates us to aim higher and achieve more. Thank you for believing in us.
Ms. Yolanda Holmes, your dedication to this community engagement and transpiris has strengthened our trust in the school board. Thank you for keeping us informed and involved in the decision-making process. We appreciate your hard work.
Thanks to the Plackman High School Digital Media Class who emailed this to Ms. Butler this morning and I will email it to all of you as well.
Thank you, Plackman High. The third item on the agenda to recognize board members who have completed hours of training and instruction for twenty-twenty-four in accordance to Act seven oh five. Dr. V?
In accordance with revised statute seventeen fifty-three, board members are required to obtain a minimum of six hours of training each year. Board members who earn twenty more, twenty or more hours are considered certified board members. Tonight, in accordance with the law, we will call out each of the board members for their hours earned during the two thousand twenty-five calendar year and you have a certificate from LSBA at your seats with you tonight. Ms. Teresa Roy, forty-six point seven five hours. Ms. Catherine Williams, fifty-seven point two five hours. Ms. Pam George, thirty-five point seven five hours. Mr. Davin Tuyay, twenty-eight point seven five hours. Mr. Mario McGlasha, thirty-three hours. Ms. Yolanda Laws, thirty-eight point two five hours. Ms. Polly Higdon, twenty-five point five hours. Mr. Michael Abair, fourteen point seven five hours. And Ms. Yolanda Holmes, twelve point five hours. There may be more hours that some of you have that LSBA hasn't accredited yet and we'll certainly make sure. But for tonight, we've got to read out what was, you know, credited by LSBA. Just like all of our other staff members go through professional development throughout the course of the year, our school board members do as well. And we thank you for ensuring not just the minimum but going above that for the students of Iber-Ville Parish.
Thank you all. Number four, recognition of Ms. Yolanda Laws for being selected as a recipient of the Educational Development Leader Rose Award of the Louisiana Tri-Parish Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Will Ms. Jane Green and Dr. Eric Joseph will present the award?
Okay. First, on behalf of IAPS, I would like to say a heartening thank you to each of you board members for everything that you do, not only for the students in Iber-Ville Parish, but also for the employees. We enjoy seeing your faces on our campus whenever your schedule permits. So thank you. Now for the matter at hand. As stated, I am Janice Green, the Louisiana Tri-Parish Alumni Chapter President. And we, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, was incorporated on January thirteenth, nineteen thirteen, by twenty-two collegiate women at Howard University. And today, we celebrate a hundred and twelve years. And at... These twenty-two founders were resilient, impactful, steadfast, and empowering. At this time, I would just like for the members of Louisiana Tri-Parish to please stand. Thank you so much. Now we will turn it over to Dr. Erica Joseph to present our award.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So on March of twenty twenty-four, we lost one of our dear members, Rose Jackson. She was one of the initial initiates of our chapter. And so in honor and memory of her, we named an award on her behalf for all the contributions. She was an educator in Pointe Cupé Parish for over thirty-plus years. She taught English at a number of the elementary schools. And so in our signature fundraiser in which we raised money for scholarships for students in Iber-Ville Parish, Pointe Cupé Parish, and West Baton Rouge, we decided to honor and recognize community leaders. And your board president, Ms. Yolanda Laws, was selected as our Educational Development Community Leader Award recipient. And we selected her because she's always available whenever we're focusing on needs of the children, as was mentioned on that video that we just saw in each of you. But she makes certain that we are involved. She lets us know we've been on meetings with her. Social action, educational awareness. She's a friend of the chapter in which we do the work for the students, the important work. And so we honor you today and we thank you for your service and your leadership.
I'll just make a few comments. I want to thank the Delta Sorority, our chapter, for selecting me for this award. It is a very prestigious award. So I do thank them for recognizing my hard work and my commitment to public education as well as their partnership with us as we continue to work to engage our young ladies as well as all the students within the district. Thank you again for your partnership and this award. Okay, we're down to number five. Presentation by Isner Ampere regarding the audit report for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Tiffany Dorsa. I'm the audit partner with Isner Ampere. And I'm happy to report that we completed the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four audit report on time. So I think everybody should give the team at the school board a round of applause for working very hard to make that accomplishment after the challenges and turnover that they've had over the past two years. With that, I'm going to let Patty Falcon, who is our audit manager on the engagement, start us off with the required communications to you all part of the audit. Yeah, there is a PowerPoint. There is a PowerPoint. That's the summary version of all the stuff we handed out to you. So you received an audit report, statewide AUPs, BESI AUPs. And in the back of the audit report is the management letter recommendations. But we do have a PowerPoint that's kind of the summary level version of what we're going to go over. So you don't have to read the three hundred pages. There we go.
We were engaged to audit the financial statements as of June thirtieth, 2024, and issue our opinion on those financial statements. We also issued an opinion on compliance for federal programs audited as a major program. And we performed agreed-upon procedures on BESI performance schedules and the Louisiana Legislative Auditor statewide agreed-upon procedures. However, we do not issue an opinion on those. You can flip to the next slide. Our responsibility, as prescribed by professional standards, is to plan and perform our audit to obtain reasonable, rather than absolute assurance about whether the financial statements and related disclosures are free of material misstatement. Next. We are also responsible for communicating significant matters related to the audit that are relevant to your responsibilities and overseeing the financial reporting process. However, we are not required to design procedures for the purpose of identifying other matters to communicate to you. Next. We have complied with all relevant ethical requirements regarding independence. Next. There were no changes to the planned audit strategy or the risks we identified as significant previously communicated to you in the Engagement Letter. We use the concept of materiality in planning and executing the audit, which is a matter of professional judgment and is affected by the auditor's perception of the financial information needs of the user of the financial statements. All significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. We noted no significant unusual transactions during our audit. And there are significant accounting estimates in the financial statements, such as the other post-employment benefit liability, the net pension liability, depreciation and amortization expense and related accumulated amounts, claims payable, accrued compensated absences, and leases. The financial statements disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. And on page twelve or Slide twelve, these are just some other required communications that we are required by our standards to let you know. And basically, it's just that we did not identify any fraud that needed to be communicated to you. There were no disagreements with management, et cetera. Now Tiffany will go over the internal control-related matters and financial highlights.
So, the short version of that is, we... There's a lot of information in there. Materiality means we can't audit every dollar because we'd never leave. So, and there's large estimates within your financial statements that are based on valuations, such as OPEB and net pension liability, that are really outside of your control based on the assumptions that are applied and the actuary will determine valuations of those reports. So, there are a lot of large numbers in the financial statements that you only see once a year because you typically are reported based on fund-level financial statements. But in accordance with GAAP, we have a full accrual basis financial statements that are also required to be audited and presented. But as part of that process, we have to review and understand your internal controls. We don't give you an opinion on that, but we have to gain that understanding in order to design our audit procedures. And we also test internal controls with respect to your federal programs that's required by uniform guidance. So, we did identify certain matters in your internal controls based on our review that we reported as four findings in the report. Those findings can be identified on page, starting on page one oh five of that big thick book that I gave you, but I'm going to walk you through the four findings that we had. In addition to that, we will also be discussing, and Patty will discuss, Management Letter comments, where just other matters that are not considered matters to relate to your internal controls that are to significant deficiencies or material weakness or material noncompliance, but are just areas for improvements that are for consideration for management to consider as they're going through best practices for the school district. So, we had four findings. One related to financial reporting on capital assets and construction in progress. This is a repeat finding from the prior year and is one of the items where controls over those processes need to be enhanced on ensuring that your capital asset reports are being reconciled to your accounting records, specifically more regularly than at year-end. Because at year-end, it's hard to come up with those reconciliations because you have to go back through a whole year of reporting in order to do so. In addition, your retainage payable amounts, certain projects were not included in your construction and progress schedules. And just ensuring that a complete review and analysis of your retainage, as well as the construction projects details are reviewed. And so, we're asking that you put a control in place to make sure that happens on a more regular basis. The second relates to timely reporting of your bank reconciliations. As you'll know, with the turnover in the financial office, Chief Financial Officer position, there's been a challenge in trying to get those bank accounts caught up. I'm happy to say they were caught up in August. Your June, in August and September, your June statements were finally caught up and balanced. And we expect that going forward, they will continue to be on an ongoing basis. The second one, the third finding, related to noncompliance with your government, Local Government Budget Act. The adoption of the budget contains some significant errors and it did not include some special revenue funds that were put into place by the school district. So, ensuring that a process in place to recover all of the new special revenue funds and that formulas are checked, et cetera, within that government document is necessary. In addition, because of the audit adjustments, there were some noncompliance with the five percent variance going in the negative variances where your expenditures exceeded the budget amount without the budget being amended by the school board. And finally, public bid law. So, those first three were repeats from the prior year. I do anticipate that there is a plan and going forward, those will be rectified. The one that we did have last year was late filing of the report, so I can tell you that that's been resolved. So, the report was filed on time, so some improvement from everybody there. The public bid law requirement was related to our view of your public works projects. We did look at a total of fifteen projects. There was only one. That was contracted under a cooperative purchasing agreement. But that agency was not on the list under the state procurement laws, so we did consider that an exception. I know we've been asked for additional information regarding those cooperative purchases, and I've supplied that to Mr. Stewart. And going forward, I know there'll be a plan with respect to that. So, those were our four findings. And of those, two of those were considered compliance findings, the state bid law and the public bid law. So, Patty's going to go over the management letter comments.
As Tiffany stated, these did not rise to the level of financial statement finding, but we felt they needed to be communicated to management. The first one is reconciliation of data submitted in the annual state reporting of personnel profiles. There was a noted difference in compensation reported for each of the twenty-five individuals selected for testing. There was also one difference noted in the education level reported. So, we just recommended that a procedure be put in place in order to reconcile compensation to what's being reported in the personnel profile. The second is related to... Yes, that is repeat. Same with the second one, that's also a repeat. Reconciliation of data submitted in the annual state reporting of class size characteristics. It was noted Schedule II did not agree to the detail of classes. The third one is that there were just, there were information, technology, environment improvement opportunities communicated to management. The fourth one relates to the school activity accounts. Internal audits of all schools should be performed every year. And documentation of invoice approvals should be enhanced and deposits should be made timely at the school level. And the last one is related to financial reporting of benefits payable. All supporting schedules and documents should be reconciled to the accounting records. And we just recommend management put a policy in place. Now Tiffany will go over the financial highlights.
Okay, we're going to skip the next page, which kind of talks about the components of your report. But basically, the summary of our audit results. So, what we didn't tell you, and we should have told you right off, is that you got an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest level assurance we can provide you. And it says that those financial statements are materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. You received an unmodified opinion on compliance for your federal award programs that we audited as a major this year. We audited three federal programs, the Special Education Cluster, the Head Start Cluster, and the Title I Program. All three had no findings reported for the audit procedures performed. We audited forty-one percent of the total federal expenditures of the school district this year. From a financial highlights perspective, this chart is your full accrual basis net position. So, full accrual basis means all your assets and all of your liabilities, including those very significant ones we talked about, net pension liability and OPEB, are on your financial statements, your capital assets as well. So, this is a five-year running history of the amounts reported for net position. Net position is the difference between your assets and deferred outflows less your liabilities and your deferred inflows. And net position is the net of those two. At year-end 2024, six thirty twenty-four, your net position was twenty-five million, four hundred seventy-five thousand, compared to ten million, one hundred twenty thousand, three forty-seven. The one thing I will note, the net position is positive overall. Not many school districts can say that, so that is positive for Iberville Parish School Board. The numbers that you see there, the ones are negative. The reason they're negative is because mainly of those, most of your, most of your net position is sitting in your net, your capital assets. The purple amount is your restrictions. So, your restricted net position is those can only be spent for certain things, either by sales tax, property tax requirements, federal program requirements, et cetera. So, that number did go down because you had some, a capital projects fund in which you have spent down money. So, it went from the fifty-seven million down to the thirty-two million. The middle color there is your net investment in capital assets. So, as you would expect, and I said you spent down those capital funds, it went from seventy-three million to eighty-eight point nine million. So, those projects you have ongoing and increasing your capital, your capital assets are going up. And the net effect of that is only a negative ninety-six million. While that may sound terrible, it is an improvement and it's not terrible because it actually increased by twenty-three point nine million over the prior year. So, a positive impact, a positive improvement for the school district. Some of those larger projects you had was the Plackman Softball Baseball Complex, the White Castle Competition Gym, Dorseyville Cafeteria, and East Iberville Fieldhouse. Moving on to the next page, this is your fund balance. This compares your general fund, which is the light blue number at the bottom, and all your other funds. So, again, total fund balance for 2024 was ninety-six million, seven hundred forty-four thousand. If you add those two numbers together there, compared to ninety-seven million, five hundred nineteen thousand in the prior year. While that is a decline, that decline is only about seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And I would expect it to be about break even. So, the whole point of budgeting is your, what it comes in must go out. So, that's only a change of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. That reduction is really when you're spending down funding that you receive on capital projects. So, the reason that would go down is because of spending of major capital projects funds. So, your property tax and sales tax were up over the year, about seven point five million compared to the prior year. While your expenses went up, the amount you transferred out of your general fund went down. And you spent down on your, out of your, your capital projects fund. So, the real change there is you had maintenance costs of about twenty-five million, maintenance, out of the maintenance fund, capital maintenance costs of about twenty-five million during the year. And then you funded the cap, another capital projects fund this year for eleven million, about eleven point three million. Any questions on that? And I'll just remind you, that was as of June thirtieth, so we're in January. I don't know what your financial picture looks like today, six months later, but that was really positive at the end of June. Excuse me. The next page just kind of shows you that change, that five-year history between your net position, which is the full accrual, and your fund balance. That big swing between the white-brown line and the red line, which is your system wide, any changes between that is really a result of capital improvements. Because your liabilities typically stay about the same, especially at the government-wide level. The brown line is really a cash basis review or short-term basis review, while the top number is the full accrual basis review. So, any changes between there, like last year, there weren't as many capital projects ongoing and you didn't put a whole lot into the capital projects. While you were doing capital projects, it just kind of started up. So, that difference is way smaller. But in 2022, you can see that division was much larger. So, same thing happened in 2024 as you put more projects and worked on more projects during the year. So, with that, that's the end of our presentation, and we'll take any questions that you have. And I'm sorry, that was a little longer than I anticipated. We get so excited. We could talk to y'all once a year.
Any comments?
I just want to thank Patty and Tiffany for the work that they've done and the guidance that they've given us. We appreciate it. The procedural things, of course, are always a work in progress. And, you know, when you've had now four budgets prepared by four different CFO in four years, you know, I think it's led to a few of those. We're in a really much better position with the procedures now. And, you know, it's going to just get better every year, right, Mr. Stewart?
I've got something I want to say, Ms. Laws. First, I want to thank y'all, but also want to thank Mr. Stewart because when he came on, he hit the ground running, and excellent job, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Mr. Stewart, thank you as well. And Ms. Laws, before we move to the next agenda item, our student's senior spotlight has gotten here now. So, if Ms. Johnson can quickly read for our student and congratulations to you. I'll come down and get a picture with you.
All right. Ms. Ashari Jones, a senior at Iberville Virtual Learning Academy from White Castle and maintain, is from White Castle and maintains a three-point-five GPA. Ashari has earned a certification in Adobe Photoshop. She also attends River Parish's Community College, where she is pursuing a P-Tech degree with a goal of becoming an operator, following in the footsteps of her aunt, who has been a major inspiration in her career choice. Ashari chose to attend IVLA for the flexibility it provides, allowing her to manage her time better and work at her own pace. Virtual learning has helped Ashari to stay organized and focused while balancing both high school and college courses. In her free time, she enjoys hanging out with friends, playing video games, and playfully teasing with her dad and aunt. Congratulations, Ms. Ashari Jones.
Okay, next, we will have the consent agenda, which is considered routine and will be enacted with one motion. The first item is to discuss and approve the Condolence Resolution for the family of Mr. Guy... Mr. Guy Thomas, husband of Mrs. Felicia Johnson, paraprofessional at Plackman High School. Discuss and approve a Condolence Resolution for the family of Mr. Bertrand P. Travis, son of Ms. Heidi Butler, register at Plackman High School. Discuss and approve a Condolence Resolution for the family of Mr. Wilbert Gilbert, brother of Ms. Annette Skinner, bus driver, and Ms. Yvonne Patterson, cafeteria worker at White Castle High School. Discuss and approve a Condolence... Discuss and approve a condolence resolution for the family of Mr. Herbert Washington, father of Mr. Terrence Favorite, bus driver. Discuss and approve condolence resolution for the family of Mr. Melvin Pete Edwards, Jr., grandfather of Ms. Candace Edwards, teacher at Plackman High School, and Ms. Megan Edwards, teacher at MSA West. Discuss and approve condolence resolution for the family of Mr. Ty Dupont, brother of Mr. Tate Dupont, district athletic director. Discuss and approve the December ninth, twenty-twenty-four regular school board meeting. Discuss and approve the December eighteenth regular, the December eighteen special school board meeting minutes, and discuss and approve the January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Ms. Teresa, from Ms. Pam George, and I have a second from Mr. Mike Abear. Ms. Saraj, machine, please.
Online voting is now open. Online voting is now closed, passage unanimously.
Next, we will have the superintendent's report.
It's good evening, we've got a lengthy night, so I'll keep my report abbreviated. First slide that I'll draw your attention to, that'll be up in a moment. I've been giving you a little update on enrollment each month, and following our return from the Christmas holidays, our enrollment bumped up quite, bumped up again. So we are, every month, it appears increasing in overall student enrollment, and we're very pleased to see that. Thank you for all that you do for our school system. The next slide, Ms. Brigitte, is just to, from me to you and our administrative staff and administrators in general, January is the designated month, but we've been fortunate enough to see the work that you do all year long, you know, and the service that you provide. I definitely appreciate the conversations that we can have and the work that we can do together, and doing what's right in the big picture for everyone in the district. The next slide, I just wanted to make this a publicly known issue. We continue to see vapes being brought, and the most disturbing thing is that these vapes are containing substances that are not only just illegal, but extremely dangerous. I think it was on December sixteenth, we put a letter out. I emailed that to you in your updates, but we put that out on Facebook and also on our website, and we sent that letter to all parents through our call-out system in the district. That was following the second student that ended up in ICU because of what was in the vapes. We do currently have the Louisiana Department of Education that's presenting to our students about the dangers to bring awareness. They were at Plackman High School on Friday, at North Iberville Elementary High School this morning. I think our next presentation is Wednesday at White Castle. And following hitting all of the high schools, we're gonna start down probably about third grade in doing more awareness, and trying to get our students to understand in that second-to-last item that there could be substances that are fatal. We're gonna do everything we can as far as an awareness and an education standpoint. The sheriff's office is working with us on this as well, and have participated in the presentations, because you know, there's a two-fold piece to this. There's the general health matter, which is a grave concern, but there's potential criminal charges that can come out of all of this as well. So I wanted to make sure while we're streaming and while we're in a public arena, that we keep awareness of this going, so our students hopefully can understand, maybe I shouldn't mess with this stuff, you know, because I may not survive it. So I just wanted to make sure you all know, and we are taking the appropriate disciplinary measures as outlined in Louisiana law in these circumstances as well. On the next slide, you know, it seems like we just started school this year. Here we are in January, about to hit the midway point, and we will soon be beginning the application period for the academy lottery, as well as early childhood. February twenty-first through the twenty-eighth, our academy lottery applications will be for MSA West, MSA East, and a Chaffalaw Basin Academy over at Crescent. Pre-K three, pre-K four application period will also open at that time, and that's also the time to apply for the academies. As we've done for the last several years, there will be an online application. We are also mailing postcards to all residents in the district and paper applications, as we did in last year, will be available at the schools as well. IVLA, we are removing kindergarten from second grade. I think I emailed you all about that earlier this month. The enrollment numbers are just extremely low, and we feel like kids, especially that young, need to be getting in-person instruction. So the kids who are in second grade now will move up to third, and in the new application process, we'll start from there, and we'll continue to monitor that enrollment on an annual basis. Next slide, or just some upcoming dates. Monday is a holiday, we'll be meeting with our student advisory councils next week. Board meeting on February tenth, PD Day on the fourteenth, and moving forward, Monday on the twenty-fourth. And of course, as stated earlier in committee, we will be monitoring the weather very closely. Monday is a holiday, that's the day that we're expected currently to have, you know, some very unfamiliar precipitation for our area. But we certainly will be monitoring temperatures as far as into that evening and any chance of any icing or anything the next morning. I will tell you tonight, we have fully ready to implement our continuous learning plan if necessary, and correspondences will go out if we have to make any type of adjustment in our instruction next week. That concludes my report.
Dr. V, I have a question. So on the vaping concerns, is there a way we could maybe put that on our Facebook page, or?
We did.
You did? I haven't seen it. Okay, good, thank you.
Should be December sixteenth that it hit Facebook.
Okay.
And we're also.
Not that I'm on it very much.
And we're also putting out, like, you know, we put out Friday, thinking the Department of Health, and then also with North Iberville today.
Okay, good.
Got to keep it aware.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thanks, Dr. V, for your update. Next, we will move to governance business, and the first item on the agenda is to discuss and approve the January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five Finance Committee meeting recommendation. There were four items on the agenda, two were action items, two items passed. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Mr. Davin Tuyay, and I have a second from Ms. Teresa Roy. Machine, please. Any, any comments from the audience? Any comments from the board? Machine, please, Ms. Saraj.
Online voting is now open. Online voting is now closed, passage unanimously.
The second item is to discuss and approve the January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five Buildings and Ground Committee meeting recommendations. There were three items on the agenda, no items were action items. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Ms. Catherine Williams, and I have a second from Ms. Yolanda Holmes. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the board? Oh, I'm sorry, we don't need a motion because we don't have any action items. Thank you kindly. The next we will have is Curriculum and Instruction Campus Operation. The first item is to discuss and approve Head Start Policy Council Agendas, Minutes, Reports, and Handouts. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Ms. Catherine Williams, and I have a second from Mr. Davin Tuyay. Ms. Polly Higdon?
Thank you, Mrs. Laws. Our meeting was held December seventeenth, and at that time, we, our policy, our Head Start policy states that if a member, a policy council member has three consecutive absences, then they will be terminated. And at this time, we have the Iberville Elementary Representative and the Dorseyville Elementary School Representative that had to be terminated because, due to their absence. And the alternate will probably take their place at the time of the meeting. I'm sure it's happened since, but at the time of the meeting, they were being contacted. Okay, and then that seventy-six-page Head Start Grant Application that, at our special meeting, that Ms. Canova went over, that is also here today for your approval. The Head Start Budget also, which is a lengthy document also. Parents are asked to only provide a backpack, a change of clothes, and a blanket for Head Start. All other supplies are provided for their students. Currently, we have twenty-six teachers, twenty-six paras, six central office staff, seven family facilitators, and seven itinerant paras on staff for our pre-K Head Start. Our safety monitoring, let's see, Ms. Diamond, can you get to that? Keep scrolling, it's a lot, a lot of pages. Our safety monitoring, there you go. For November, we had one concern. Thankfully, there were no critical incidents. Also, our attendance report, we have ninety-seven percent capacity. And then what's happening in, in Head Start. Our mental health specialist report, our fiscal report. Our next meeting is Thursday, the twenty-third. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Higdon. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Here are none?
Online voting is now closed, passage unanimously.
The second item is Presentation of Iberville Parish School Board's Truancy Efforts to Improve Attendance.
Good evening, everyone. Our commitment is to tackle truancy as a district-wide initiative, as long, as well as with our schools. We are adopting recommendations from the state, aiming to reduce overall absences by two days per student and chronic absenteeism by five percent. This success hinges on a team effort involving the school system, parents, the community, our faith-based, faith-based leaders, and all stakeholders. This year, we're implementing several strategies, and these include rewarding consistent attendance. At the school level, awards are, awards are being given at programs each nine weeks to recognize students with perfect attendance and improved attendance. During the first nine weeks, the district, in collaboration with Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, recognized all students with perfect attendance at each school. In this nine weeks, within the past two days, and we have a few schools left to go to, we've shifted our focus to rewarding students who have previously struggled with truancy but have improved their attendance. We've also developed some community partners, especially the Louisiana Tri Parish Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, to involve them in meeting with parents during our truancy intervention classes to get to the root cause of why our students are missing school, and data transparency to gain support from our public. The data transparency is a public-facing dashboard that we have been working on, and we are very proud to be able to present it tonight. And this is gonna be housed on our website, and it showcases district and school-level truancy data. So real quickly, I'll just go through it, box by box, so I can tell you about the parts of it, and then I will email you all this link after the meeting, and it will also be placed on the website. For this dashboard, you can see this school year, and you can go to the past school years all the way, I think, until twenty-one, twenty-two. And you can toggle this screen by all schools, so right now, you're seeing every school in the district. Or you can change it and pick whatever school you want to see. You can do it by ethnicity, grades, EL, five oh four, SPED, and gender. So you can break down the attendance data by all of the subgroups and all of the schools. If you go down a little bit lower, you can see the selected attendance, attendance metrics over time, and you can see it by day, by week, by month. And where you see metric, you can see full-day absences, you can see who has excused absences, early checkouts, late check-ins. If you move a little bit further, it shows you the number of students we have truant, three to five days, six to nine days, ten-plus days. I'll drop down to the count of absences, absent types for chronically absent students. And chronically absent students is ten percent, if they miss ten percent of the school year, and that doesn't matter what their absence code is. So that includes excused absences as well, because we know these students aren't at school and in the classrooms. And then at the bottom, you can see the monthly count, students by attendance type. Like, that's showing the month of August, but you can move that and toggle that month, and it'll show you each, each month. Also, on that dashboard, you can see some little question marks. Ms. Diamond, if you can scroll over to where it says count of absence types by chronically absent students. At the top, you see a little question mark pops up. If you click on that, it'll give you definitions of what is shown in this dashboard. And then if you travel back all the way to the left, you can go and see school comparisons. You can see year-over-year analysis, and then you can look at it by all students or only by historically truant students. And then the bottom tab is information that you can just see, and it gives you definitions. Or if you have a question, you can also submit a question to us, and it also gives some resources to parents. So this multifaceted approach demonstrates our commitment to addressing truancy and creating a positive environment for all of our students. And I would like to invite Ms. Mitchell from the Louisiana Tri Parish Delta Sigma Theta Sorority to just give a little insight of what they've been doing to help us out with this effort.
So again, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you again. I'm Tish Mitchell, the second vice president of Louisiana Tri Parish, alumni chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We have been working with Iberville Parish Schools since September. I met Mr. Ryan and to save us, stop the violence, and he mentioned to us about a program that you all had implemented in regards to attendance matters. The following, maybe three weeks after that, I went to a regional leadership conference, and we presented with the same exact thing about attendance awareness. Of course, ended up speaking to Ms. Latanga Masara, and she got me an opportunity to speak to Ms. Laws. So I want to say first, Dr. V and Ms. Laws, thank you for this opportunity for being able to speak in regards to this. We have, as I say, have been working with Iberville Parish in September in regards to Attendance Awareness Month. Chronic absenteeism and truancy continues to affect school districts across the U.S. Iberville Parish Schools was the first that allowed our chapters to speak about this ongoing issue. In October, Ms. Rebecca and I visited each school, it was a very adventurous date, and presented, we attended each school, and we presented moving forward certificates, and two students through a random selection process received perfect attendance medals for attending school every day for the first nine weeks. The highlight of the day was seeing how appreciative each student was by the glows on their faces, the joys in their voices, and the, as they say, "thank you." It was a small incentive, but it touched their hearts, and it was because of their daily commitment. They were able to celebrate this accomplishment. These students knew the importance of being present in school daily is powerful. I want to say this. I wanna say this. I had an opportunity to come to your truancy class. So as I get ready to take my seat, we have some work to do. Okay. It takes everyone in this room, and the schools, parents, and the community. As I stated before, one push, one positive word can make a huge impact for that one moment in decreasing chronic absenteeism and avoiding truancy. Together, we can ensure each student knows they have the power because we care about their future. Thank you for this opportunity and know we are determined to reach the goal of increasing attendance and continuing this partnership with Iberville Parish Schools. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. And if anybody has any questions about the dashboard from the board, if you get on the call, if you call me, I can walk you through it. I know we went through it quickly tonight, but it really does have a lot of data and information that, you know, our community can use to help us with this issue. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, is that attached?
It is not attached because when you attached it, it just attached the first page and you couldn't toggle it. So it would've just been like a picture or a PDF. We couldn't actually attach the website, but I'm gonna send it to you in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we will move on to new business. The first item is to discuss and approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six District Calendar and the twelve-month Employees Calendar as presented.
Ms. Burgett, can you pull that one?
That's just Johnson?
The one that you just had up.
We need a motion, Ms. Laws.
Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Ms. Pam George and I have a second from Ms. Polly Higdon. Ms. Johnson?
It's hard to believe we're already approving the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. So just some little background information. The Calendar Committee met with parents, teachers, administrators, and central office staff on December ninth to discuss suggestions regarding the calendar options for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. It was decided at the meeting to have two calendar options with one of them including a one extended day and the other including two extended days to send to all employees and the general public for a vote. When presenting the options, three major considerations were taken into account to determine the start date, holidays, and professional development days and the ending date of the school year. So in two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, it is not a leap year, meaning there's one less day in the calendar. We also sent a feedback survey in November to all employees and also the public to receive input on what they would like as their start date, end date, whether they want the holidays to look like. And the major things we took back from that survey, most of it was pretty stable. But sixty percent of the employees indicated that they were in favor of the extended day. And fifty-two, sixty-two point four percent of the respondents wanted the school year to start on or after August first, but also end before Memorial Day. So as you know, we have to comply with law. Teachers have to have a hundred and eighty-two days of contracted days. Students need in sixty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty instructional minutes per school year. So, you know, when we present this to everyone, we say, you know, we want a lot of things, but you have to give some things up maybe, you know, if you want those parameters to be followed. So with all that being said, we sent out the two calendars to vote. And Calendar two is the calendar that was voted on with fifty point three percent of the employees voting for that calendar. And in the public vote, Calendar two, fifty-four percent voted for Calendar two. So Calendar two is the winner. And if you can go to the next attachment, Ms. Diamond? This is the recommended calendar for the upcoming school year. We will start school. All teachers will report on August the fourth. And that first full week of August will be PD days and students will begin on August the eleventh. I'm not gonna go through the entire calendar, but many of the things stayed the same as this year with regards to the holidays, with the same number of days being given for our fall break, Thanksgiving, Christmas break. And the school year will end before Memorial Day. The major difference is instead of just one extended day this year, we will have two extended days, one in August and one in March. And the March day is gonna be designated when report cards go out, so we can have parent-teacher conferences. And also, it's right before state testing, so we will have Leap Night, which most schools have to stay for anyway. So that's the day we put as the extended day with some great recommendations from our Calendar Committee. So if you have any questions, please let me know. I know we also have the twelve-month calendar as well. This one pretty much stays the same. The only difference is when we come back from Christmas, you wanna go over this one, Dr. V?
Yeah, I do first. These pretty much mirror last year, which created an era that's on this one. November fifth, two thousand twenty-four will not be a part of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar. That was a carryover from this current year, so that comes off. Election days are only holidays and even number years when there are federal congressional elections. So on odd number of years, those are not holidays. So this mirrors, you know, basically what occurred last year with the addition of a, of an extended day and the addition of another half a day before we leave out for Christmas. The students are gonna have a half a day, I think, that day, but employees will have to work a full day that day.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson and Dr. V. Are there any comments from the audience? Are there any comments from the board? Ms. Raj, machine, please.
Online voting is now open. Online voting is now closed. Passage unanimously.
Okay, the second item is to consider and take action on a resolution provided for canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special election held in the Parish of Iberville, State of Louisiana for school purposes and Consolidated School District Number Five of the Parish of Iberville, State of Louisiana on Saturday, December the seventh, twenty twenty-four, to authorize the renewal of special tax within. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Ms. Teresa Roy and I have a second from Mr. Michael Abair. Dr. V?
Yes, this is the next step following the December seventh millage renews. This one will require a verbal roll call vote so we can have that recorded officially in our minutes. I do have to read a summary of the resolution in compliance with the law. This resolution canvases the returns of the special elections held in Iberville Parish for school purposes, including Consolidated School District Number Five on Saturday, December seventh, two thousand twenty-four, to renew the levy of avalorum taxes in each district. The results of each election are as follows. Proposition number one, one point seven eight mills for alternative school programs, a total of two thousand seven hundred two votes cast in favor, and a total of one thousand six hundred ninety-eight votes cast against, resulting in a majority of one thousand four votes in favor of Proposition number one. Proposition number two, four point eight three mills for general operations and maintenance, a total of two thousand seven hundred nineteen votes cast in favor, and a total of one thousand six hundred fifty-three votes cast against, resulting in a majority, one thousand sixty-six votes cast in favor of Proposition number two. Proposition number three, eight point five zero mills for salaries and benefits, a total of two thousand seven hundred two votes cast in favor, and a total of one thousand six hundred fifty-one votes cast against, resulting in a majority of one thousand fifty-one votes cast in favor of Proposition number three. Proposition number four, twenty-six mills for Consolidated School District Number Five, two thousand six hundred eighty-one votes cast in favor, and a total of one thousand six hundred sixty votes cast against, resulting in a majority of one thousand twenty-one votes cast in favor of the Consolidated School District Number Five proposition. Accordingly, the foregoing special avalorum taxes currently being levied have been renewed for additional ten-year periods, with the earliest now expiring in two thousand thirty-five and the latest in two thousand thirty-eight. The renewal does not result in an increase in any avalorum taxes over those currently being levied and will in fact lower the millage currently being levied in the parish for school purposes. The board's approval of the resolution will promulgate the election results as required by law and authorize the filing of the necessary post-election forms and notices. I recommend your approval of this resolution.
Thank you, Dr. V. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the board? Ms. Raj, machine, please.
I'm gonna have to roll call this one.
Just, okay.
Ms. George?
Yes.
Mr. Abair?
Yes.
Ms. Higdon?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes? Ms. Laws?
Yes.
Mr. McGlasham?
Yes.
Ms. Roy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuier?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Passage unanimously.
Thank you. Item number three is to discuss and approve adopting a resolution asking the legislators to amend Revised Statute seventeen sixty-three to allow the board to create nine single-member district as opposed to the current eight single-district members and one at large. Do I have a motion? Ms. Laws, I'd like to offer a substitute motion to defer this item. Do I have a second for this? I have a second, I have a first from Ms., I have a motion from Ms. Pam George and I have a second from Ms. Teresa Roy. Any comments from the audience? Any comments from the board? The board will await for our demographic consultant to provide us some additional information as to how nine-singer district will look. Thank you. And can I have the vote now?
Online voting is now open.
And we're voting on the substitute motion, right? Yes.
To defer. Online voting is now closed. It passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Ms. Pam George and a second from Ms. Teresa Roy. Thank you.